I am Councilman Eric Castello from the 11th District, Chairman of the Judiciary Committee, joined by Vice Chair, Mary Pat Clark.
Thank you.
From the 14th District, Councilman John Block from the 9th District.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Shannon Snead from the 13th District. We have a quorum, correct?
I didn't hear what you said, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Do we have a quorum?
Let's see. Yes, you have four. I found your four, that's a quorum. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Clark, can you go on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Give me one second. We are here for two bills today. Just pulling up bill numbers. Okay, first is Bill 20-0540, corrective city streets, renaming Violet Hill White Way to Violet Hill White Way. The long story short of this, this is a very small 100-block street in the 11th District in the northeast corner of Popleton, in the towns at the terraces in the district I represent. And Violet Hill White Way, the word "white" is spelled W-H-I-T-E, and it should be spelled W-H-Y-T-E. It is named after the first black female police officer in Baltimore City who served in the 1930s. It was brought to my attention by someone related to the FOP that this was misspelled, and I just wanted to make sure that this was corrected for the record, to make sure we honor Ms. White's memory. So with that, I think we have city agency reports. Marguerite, who do we have for this one? Marguerite?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I have an agency report from Planning, which was favorable, and the Department of Real Estate, favorable.
Start with Mr. Tizo, Planning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. The Planning Commission reviewed this bill in their meeting of July 9th and recommend favorable.
All right, do you have anything to add to the historical context here of the misspelling?
No, sir. Your research is better than what I had available to me, but obviously it should be spelled correctly.
Thank you, sir. Real estate?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members. It's Jim Knighton from the Comptroller's Office on behalf of the Office of Real Estate. The Department of Real Estate stands by its position as set forth in our statement of impact, which is we support the bill and urge a favorable vote.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
This is Lena DePeter from the Law Department. May I ask you?
Yes.
Um, I just want to let you know, I did submit a report yesterday evening, and the Law Department approves the bill. Okay.
Thank you. Um, I'm checking the bill file right now to make sure. 0540, to make sure we don't have any agency comments. One second.
Mr. Chair, this is Liam Davis from DOT. We submitted a bill report as well last night, and we are also in support of advancement of this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. So that's law, planning, real estate, transportation, everyone's taken care of. So there are a few questions. Marguerite, do we have any public comment on this one?
Uh, wait a minute. Can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you want me to go down the list and see if anyone wants to testify?
I do. I believe that most people that are on to testify are going to be on for the main event today, which is the tree canopy hearing.
Well, we have 29 people listed as attendees. I'll just go down real fast, okay?
Yes, ma'am. You're the best. Thank you.
Hello, who did testify on the next bill?
I would just suggest that she gets a top of the queue for the one-offs. Because any of the other people that we're doing one-offs for that aren't on Jamila's list and are going to get a tree, like Ted or somebody, that can happen much later, like in October, November range.
Who's that from our street? Marguerite? Marguerite?
Yes.
We're going to entertain a motion to move this bill. I highly suspect that there is no public comment on this. If there is public comment on this, we will make a motion to revisit, and we will revote the bill should that be the case. But again, I think, I highly suspect there's no comment on correcting a name. Councilman Block, Vice Chair Clark, Councilwoman Snead, if you don't have any objection, I will entertain a motion at this time to move the bill.
So move.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there a second?
I'd like to approve of the change of White Dwight.
I think I got a motion second by Snead, but she may have been on mute. But we'll take a third by Clark, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I didn't either, but I saw her, and I'm quite certain she made it.
Okay, just so I'm hearing right.
Yes, ma'am.
I approve it.
We'll do roll call. Castello's yes, Clark?
Yes.
Block?
Okay, guys, where are these people at?
Block?
He's supposed to be out here. Where is he?
Block's having some connectivity issues. We'll go to Snead?
Yes.
Block? We're going to have to wait to get that fourth vote. Call?
I'm calling him now, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate you.
Oh, his internet has stopped for a second, so. But he is voting yes, it's just that his internet has stopped, so hopefully it'll be back shortly.
Okay. Marguerite, does that suffice, or do we need to wait until?
I can put him on speaker.
Okay.
We need a fourth vote, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'm putting him back on speaker. John, you're on speaker?
Oh, I'm voting yes.
Thank you, Councilmen and Councilwoman. Thank you for facilitating. Marguerite, so we have four yes votes.
That's correct.
Yep, give me one second. Councilman Pinkett is absent, is that correct?
That's correct.
Councilman Risinger?
Absent.
Okay, and then Councilman Stokes?
Absent.
Come on.
So this bill passes with four favorable, and moves to second reader on the next scheduled meeting of the city council.
Okay.
All right, we're going to take a two-minute recess. I'm going to call. Need three council members that are absent, and then we will proceed with the next bill. So next up is Council Bill 20-0546, Natural Resources, Forest and Tree Conservation. I'm Councilman Eric Castello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined by... Oh, hang on, got a text message from Councilman Stokes. Councilman Stokes, are you on? Councilman? Councilman Stokes?
I just elevated him, Mr. Chair. Oh, let's see. He should be on now, let's see. Yes. He's here, sir.
Councilman Stokes?
Thanks, everybody.
You're all good. Do I have a motion to reconsider Council Bill 20-0540?
So moved.
Motion by Clark, is there a second?
Second.
By Block. All those in favor of reconsidering Council Bill 20-0540? All those opposed, say nay. Vote is unanimous. We will reconsider Council Bill 20-0540 as a motion, Council Bill 20-0540.
Mr. Chair, the committee, I move the adoption of this legislation with correct the spelling of white, And is from the misspelling that was pointed out, this is in honor of the first officer of the Police Department, I believe.
Second.
Removed.
Motion by Clark, second by Block, we'll do roll call. Castello's yes, Clark?
Yes.
Block? Pinkett?
Yes.
Yes.
Snead?
Yes.
Snead's a yes, Stokes? COVID-19 technology issue. I will get him on speakerphone. We're ready to move on to today's main event, and the 27 callers that we have, which I know are going to provide some good testimony today. Marguerite, hang on. It's your... Your, say a yes vote.
Yes.
I did not compel you to say you're a yes vote, I just asked you to repeat yourself, just to be clear. Thank you, Councilman. Marguerite, are we good?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Seven, seven yes.
Seven yays, no opposed. This bill moves to second reader at the next scheduled city council meeting.
August 17th.
I'm not saying the date, just the next city council meeting.
Oh, okay, sir.
In case there's a meeting scheduled beforehand. We are ready to move on. Thank you for everyone's patience. We are now going to hear Council Bill 20-0546, Natural Resources, Forest and Tree Conservation. I'm Councilman Eric Castello from the 11th District, Chair of the Judiciary Committee. We are joined by Vice Chairwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District, Councilman John Block from the 9th District, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District, Councilman Ed Risinger from the 10th District, Councilwoman Shannon Snead from the 13th District, and Councilman Robert Stokes from the 12th District. We are also joined by Nina Themelis on behalf of Mayor Jack Young, as well as Kaylin Young and Dominic McIlilly on behalf of Council President Scott. We are going to start off with agency reports, just to give a run-a-show, because I know we have a number of folks who are going to testify today. Usually what we do during these hearings, we will do kind of boilerplate announcements, which we have just completed, and then we will go through agency reports. Then we will take questions from council members for each of the specific city agencies, and then we will move into public testimony. On this bill, if I'm not mistaken, Nina, please correct me if I'm wrong, the lead agency is going to be either Wreckin' Parks or the Office of Sustainability?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Matt Stegman, yep.
Yeah, sorry. So the lead office for this is Sustainability and Planning, and today both of those are going to be represented by Amy Gilder-Besari.
Amy, okay. So what we're going to do is, we're going to go through each of the other agency reports first, and then we will go to Amy, and Amy's going to give a... Amy, I'm going to ask you to give, you know, two, three-minute explanation of what this bill is. Five minutes, that's fine. So we'll pull up the bill. Okay, let's start with the Law Department, reapproved for form and legal sufficiency, Victor.
Good morning. Yes, this is Vic Turbola from the Law Department. The Law Department is prepared to approve it for form and legal sufficiency. We are asking for an amendment on page 17 and 18, striking subtitle 17 in its entirety. It's the actual lines, the bill number lines are in the report. That basically, subtitle 14 basically repeats what is already in state law. It is basically a bad practice to duplicate what's in state law in a local bill, so we're asking for that to be removed. But in any case, we're prepared to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Victor, you said subtitle 14, do you mean subtitle?
Forty-seven, forty...
Yep.
It's forty-seven, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
It begins on page 17, and it concludes on page 18. It is line on page 17, it begins on line 23, so we would have you strike line 23 through 31 on page 17. And on page 18, we would have you strike lines 1 through 20 on page 18. And that'll take care of basically deleting all of what is now subtitle 47 in the bill.
Okay. We will come back to that in a few moments. Let's go to Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals. Do we have anyone from BMZA on the call? Nina or Matt?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Matt Stegman from the Mayor's Office. I do not see anybody from BMZA. I'm not sure if they have sent in their report yet, but we will get that information to the committee as soon as possible.
I do not see their report in Legistar. Do we know if BMZA has any opposition to the bill?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Nina? Nina, anything on your end? Okay, let's move to HCD, Housing.
Good morning. This is Bob Pipick from Department of Housing and Community Development, and DHCD stands by its submitted report to no objection to the bill.
Thank you, Bob. Department of Public Works, DPW?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. This is Marsha Collins with the Department of Public Works. We are in support of the legislation, including the recommended amendments put forward by the Planning Commission and the Planning Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Wreckin' Parks, BCRP?
Mr. Chair, Matt Stegman again. Could I staff, if they haven't already, I just sent a message in the chat, but can we elevate Charles Murray, I'm sorry, Charles Murphy? He is one of the, he's in as an attendee, and he's here on behalf of Wreckin' Parks.
Marguerite, please proceed with the request from the Mayor's Office.
He should be there, Mr. Chair. He's in the panel this section.
Mr. Murphy?
Hello. Hey, sorry, I didn't actually think I was going to be representing anybody. I was just listening in because I work for the Forestry Division. Wreckin' Parks supports it. I think capital from Wreckin' Parks had put in an amendment, but other than that, Wreckin' Parks supports.
Excellent, thank you.
May I ask, Mr. Chair, what the amendment is? I didn't see that.
I don't know either. We'll, I think we'll get to that in a moment. I'm just getting the agencies that aren't involved, or as involved, out of the way first. So BCRP is done, DPW is done, HCD is done, EMZA is done, Law Department is done. So that leaves us with the Planning Commission and the Office of Sustainability. And Amy, you're representing both today?
Yes.
Thank you. So if you could give us a five-minute read-through of, you know, what we're doing here today, and save the amendments for the end.
Okay. So this bill relates to the city's forest conservation program. It supports the city's comprehensive plan and sustainability plan, which aim to preserve the city's existing tree canopy. The council recently heard a, approved an update to the city's critical area program, which relates to land within 1,000 feet of the water. That's a separate set of regulations, and basically, any property that's not in the critical area is subject to forest conservation. And so that's the majority of the city that is subject to the forest conservation requirements. As far as the existing forest conservation program, it is aimed at preserving existing trees or where trees are cleared, providing replacement for trees. So there are state requirements that determine those calculations, depending on how much existing forest exists, how much should be preserved to meet the requirements, or if trees are cleared, how much replanting is required, or if there's no existing trees, a certain amount of tree canopy needs to be established. And those requirements can be met four different ways, either through onsite preservation of trees or planting, through offsite planting, or through payments into the city's offset fee account, or through a combination of those different methods. As the bill was developed, there is a period of outreach and work with committees and stakeholders, including city agencies, environmental groups, and development groups. Also, before the bill was introduced, there was a presentation to the Sustainability Commission, and the draft of the bill and the Forest Conservation Manual were posted to the Planning Department's website for public comment. And then public comments were incorporated, and also agency and stakeholder comments before the bill was introduced to city council back in June. Also, the drafts of the bill and the first reader have been provided to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources. The Department of Natural Resources of the state oversees all local forest conservation programs, and so any changes to local programs need to be provided to the Department of Natural Resources for the opportunity to comment. And at this point, we haven't received any comments back from DNR yet. Also, as previously mentioned, this bill was referred to the Planning Commission, and the item was heard by Planning Commission at their July 9th meeting. For, as far as what's included in the bill?
Amy, sorry to interrupt. Real quickly, what happened at the Planning Commission on July 9th?
So I've provided the staff report that was presented to the Planning Commission on July 9th, and also the decision memo that summarizes the decision of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission concurs with the recommendations of departmental staff and recommends that the bill be amended and passed by city council. The Planning Commission, there were four amendments in the staff report, which I've provided an amendment sheet that was developed by Legislative Reference. If you don't have that, let me know, and I can forward it by email. So that includes four amendments that were in the staff report, and one additional amendment that was approved by the Planning Commission. If you'd like, I can go through those at this point, if not, I can hold that.
We'll get back to the amendments at the end.
Okay.
Finish your summary. Thank you.
Sure. So as for the effects of the bill, the Forest Conservation Program itself has been in place since the 90s, and it hasn't been updated in at least 20 years. So there are some updates throughout, but overall, the types of changes included in the bill relate to kind of fall into three basic different types of categories. There's a set of changes that update the local program to either comply with changes made at the state level, or to better coordinate with the state code. Some of these include adding forest mitigation banks as an option for how the forest conservation requirements can be met. And so that's basically preservation of forest on another site, permanently protected to meet the forest conservation requirements for a development project. Another change is related to the uses of our local mitigation funds, and it widens that definition to the widest options that are available under the state code to give us more options of how those funds can be used. Also, the next category of changes relates to codifying and clarifying existing forest conservation policies that the Planning Department has been using and enforcing that aren't necessarily in the code. So these types of changes include things like allowing notification of applicants by email, clarifying some of the points related to how things are calculated, including in the code, the city's policy related to specimen trees, and adding to the code a policy recently adopted by Planning Commission related to how the modification for a forest conservation easement can be considered and reviewed. And then the final category related to the changes in the bill is better coordinating the forest conservation requirements with other regulations and development reviews. And so this includes updating the fee and lieu contribution rate and fines, so that these fees for, under forest conservation, are the same as those under the Critical Area Program, which I had previously mentioned. And also, the city's landscape manual also has fee and lieu rates. And so raising those so that they're consistent across those three programs. And also, another change related to other development reviews is changing the applicability for forest conservation review from currently 20,000 square feet down to 5,000 square feet, which aligns with stormwater and grading and sediment erosion control trigger under Department of Public Works reviews. Also, the bill includes an effective day... Also, the bill includes an effective date, and so that is, in the bill, as 30 days after the bill is signed into law, that would relate to plans approved before that date would be under current regulations, and after that date, the updated regulations adopted in the bill would apply, and also, after that point, any increases in fees or fines would apply. And so, that's the summary that I have.
Thank you. Where in the bill file are the proposed amendments?
So there should be a set for.
Planning report?
Sustainability.
Is that in the planning report or the planning staff report?
The planning staff report has four of the amendments, and then the additional amendment that was offered by Planning Commission itself is in the Planning Bill Report.
Okay, what's in the Office of Sustainability report? Are all five of them in there?
No, the Sustainability Report has two separate amendments that are different than those in the planning, in the planning report. I can forward all of these if you need.
Nope, I got them here. So, just to confirm, we have, we have four in the planning report, one in the planning staff report, two in the Office of Sustainability Report, a grand total of seven, and then we have the Law Department's amendment, correct?
That's my understanding.
Eight amendments, okay, so let's go to the.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, this is Marguerite. I have a copy of the planning, they have five amendments listed. Five.
Right, five total for planning.
And three, oh, two, three for law, and two for sustainability.
This is Victor from the Law Department. I don't, you know, I'm not seeing all of those amendments, I'm seeing six or something. The Law Department only has one grand amendment, so I don't know where we're going with that, Marguerite, with more than one.
When I said you have amendment number one, and amendment number two, and amendment number three, in your paperwork I have.
I don't know what paperwork you have, I have one big amendment which I mentioned orally, and it's in my report.
Okay, well, this was a part of the bill synopsis that was submitted by a colleague.
Mr. Chair, Mary Pat Clark.
Yes, please, Chair.
As a member, I saw one, I only saw one amendment from planning, I haven't, and that's the one about nine days. I apologize, but I've been through my emails, I don't have these amendments, and I'm only mentioning it now because there's a pile of amendments that I haven't seen, and I've been through the bill a couple times. How to receive an email while I'm online at the hearing, so I'm just saying, we need to go through these at the end, so that at least orally, we know what they are. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, no need to apologize, I think all the members of the committee are in the same predicament, but.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, let's start with, let's start with Law Department. So, I've got agency comments dated July 28th, signed by Victor. And I've got on page two, Department therefore is prepared to approve the bill for form of sufficiency as drafted, but we recommend unamendment to the bill, delete subtitle 47 in its entirety. Victor explained before, Marguerite, do you have, just so we're all on the same page, the Law Department Agency Comments Letter, which I accessed from Legisstar in the bill file? I'm only seeing one amendment there.
Mr. Chair, I'm looking at the bill synopsis that was presented by Matt Peters, and he had a set of amendments from three agencies, and one dated July 28th from the Law Department, and maybe it's an update, but it has three amendments, that's what I'm looking at.
Can you, can you please email that to the committee?
Okay, let me, let me try, okay, hold on, hold on.
Yep, thank you.
I can, I can only tell you, as the author, as the author of that report.
Victor, 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 we'll, we'll get back to you, we'll get this resolved.
Okay.
This is, you know, we'll work this out. Okay, so Amy, you've got five amendments in the planning report, from Department of Planning? Because I pulled up the report, and I'm only seeing one amendment, and then under Planning Staff? I'm seeing three amendments.
We provided an updated.
Okay, so we got a, we got a hard stop here, because there's too much confusion going on, and I'm feeling a little uncomfortable about this. So, the committee needs to understand all the amendments that are being proposed by the administration. So I'm going to ask, Matt or Nina, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Matt, I'm going to ask, if you can, the word document, I would like all of the amendments, and start with each agency, so we've got one for law, for planning, and whatever we have for planning staff, whatever we have for Office of Sustainability Commission, and I'd like all of the amendments put in that administration's, put that into one document, and then email that to the entire committee, along with Marguerite, and include Amy and Victor on that, and then once you send that, just interrupt in the middle of the hearing, irrespective of speaking, and just let me know that that has been sent, and then I'll check my email, just so we know that that's coming. Is that feasible?
Yeah, yeah, I will, I'll get that together right now and get that out to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, colleagues on the committee, if there's no objections, I see Councilwoman Clark is having some connectivity issues. Oh, there she is. Colleagues on the committee, if there's no objections, what I'd like to recommend is that we move into public testimony, while Matt in the mayor's office works on aggregating all of the amendments in one document for our review. I know we have at least 27 callers on the line for this bill, but I want to make sure that, that I have full consent of the committee before moving forward with this approach, keeping in mind that our folks who are residents are providing testimony on the bill as drafted, and privy to the proposed amendments by the agencies.
Mr. Chair, this is Council President, I support your recommendation.
Mary Pat Clark, I also supported, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Snead? Councilman Block? Councilman Pinkett, yes. Yep, excellent, thank you, and Councilman Stokes? Like an inner neck.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, sir. Okay, Marguerite, we're going to jump into public testimony in a second. Matt, how much time do you anticipate needing to get all those amendments aggregated into one document? Matt, Nina?
I'm not, sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure where Matt, I guess he dropped off for a second. I wouldn't expect it to take longer than maybe 10, 15 minutes, if that, probably not that long, but I need to touch base with Matt.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm on the phone with council staff, but no, it should just take a couple minutes to get that to the committee.
Excellent, thank you, Matt and Nina, appreciate you. And we have Dominic and Kaylin from the Council President's Office, just want to make sure there's no concerns with the approach I've laid out. Dominic or Kaylin?
No, no, Mr. Chair, we're good.
Thank you. All right, Marguerite, let's take it away on public testimony.
Okay.
One thing I ask that folks who are testifying, just out of respect for everyone's time, I know there's a lot of strong support for this bill, and I know the committee is, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, I know there's a lot of strong support for this bill, so I would ask that everyone keep their public testimony to under two minutes. Please and thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I'm going to start with the individuals who sent me a chat saying that they wanted to testify. Ms. Kleiman?
Yes, hi. My name's Deborah Kleiman, and I am the Chair of the Greater Baltimore Group of the Sierra Club, which covers Baltimore City, Baltimore County, and Hartford County, and we support this bill as an organization. I also support it as an educator in Baltimore City, who teaches preschool, and I do a lot of arts integration education, and my focus is, a lot of times, environmental education, and we talk about trees a lot, and what trees do for us, which I know you all don't need to know, you know what trees provide for us. So I also want to thank the city for planting a lot of trees. I notice whenever trees die, at least on the Lock Raven Corridor, that trees are planted pretty quickly, and I really appreciate that. This bill is very important because, just an example, Elickit City has flooded unprecedentedly in the past five years, twice, and we believe that that's due to deforestation in Howard County above Elickit City. We know that trees provide shade, and it helps everything from the air that we breathe, along with us trying to shut down the incinerator in Baltimore City. We believe that we need to plant many more trees and not allow developers to cut trees in order to build buildings. I believe personally that we should take down buildings and plant more trees. So I want to thank you for letting me testify, and I urge you all to pass this bill.
Mr. Alessandro?
Ben, do you want to? Yes, hello, this is Ben Alexandra, I'm the Water Program Director for the Maryland League Conservation Voters, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. Yes, so thank you so much for the opportunity to testify, and for your consideration of this really important issue. We're testifying on behalf of our 2,444 members here in Baltimore City, and the Maryland League Conservation Voters has been working to improve forest policy throughout the state for several years now. So Baltimore is going to be in really good company with this bill. Just over the last year, for example, there's been upgrades in Howard County and Orendal County just as, just recently, Frederick County and others. Now, while these are, this bill is a small but important step, it doesn't go as, as far to do like, for example, what Frederick County just did two weeks ago, to make sure that there's no net loss of forests in that county. It still is a very important step that is really also essential to at least bring the city up to the new minimum standards that are, that were passed recently on the state level, particularly when it comes to, to the fee and lieu. So that increase of fee and lieu is really paramount if the city wants to continue to accrue that. But we're really also just supportive about this because forests are not just important out, you know, in the rural areas of Maryland, but really are essential for the prosperity of every resident here in Baltimore. There's plenty of studies showing how much they can actually reduce asthma rates, diabetes, blood pressure, reduce stress, as well as clean our air, as well as stopping and mitigating floods, and helping to clean our drinking water. So, there's a big MS4 permit that's coming out for Baltimore, a lot more work that's going to have to be done to clean up the stormwater, and it would be much, much more expensive if we didn't have the forests kind of naturally do job of cleaning the water, that otherwise, we're going to have to do very expensive engineered solutions to fix. So, for example, Prince George's County actually just did a study of how much it would cost them to pay to do all that engineered work that the forests do for free, and it's actually at $2.8 billion annually that they found in that, in that county alone. So, you know, these are, these are not just esoteric numbers, but real quantifiable numbers of benefits that we really can get by preserving and increasing our tree cover here. So, we're really appreciative that this is a step moving forward to help protect and improve the forests and that, the tree canopy here in Baltimore, and we hope that this is just the first of many improvements to come. And for all these reasons, we support this bill and urge a favorable report on CB 20-0546. Thank you very much for your time.
Hello, is this me?
That's you.
Okay, great. Good morning, my name is Zoe Gensheimer, I'm the co-chair of the Baltimore City Forestry Board, as well as the Community Forestry Coordinator at Blue Water Baltimore. In both roles, I'm dedicated to the planting and celebration of trees, and as some of you may know, the Forestry Board was formed more than 30 years ago as a group of committed volunteers who care deeply about our forests. And at Blue Water, we plant and give away thousands of trees each year with the mission of clean water and strong communities. But planting new trees and educating residents about their many benefits isn't enough. Mature trees are irreplaceable, and it's been recommended that 40% canopy coverage is necessary for a healthy city. Right now, we're at about 27, 28%, but big trees are getting cut down with little consideration, with a short-sighted focus on development. So this bill introduces some small but really necessary steps toward acknowledging trees as assets and infrastructure, and as Ben mentioned, trees have been doing, quietly doing a lot of work that benefits us economically, socially, and environmentally, and it's time we paid them more attention and provided some better protections. So just for a really brief specific, a two-inch diameter breast height red maple can absorb around 60 gallons of stormwater per year, while a 40-inch maple absorbs more than 16,000. And these numbers are hugely impactful when we consider all of the impervious surfaces in our city, as well as our aging pipe infrastructure, and increased storms due to climate change. So trees protect us. When we step back and look at things holistically and plan for future generations now, we can participate together in the creation of a more resilient and beautiful Baltimore city. And I want to finish by stating that the suggested amendment for the Department of Recreation and Parks is disheartening to say the least. As the only city agency tasked with the promotion and protection of our urban, urban trees, they should be welcoming ways to increase our canopy and not asking for an exemption. So I urge the Capitol Division to coordinate and partner more closely with forestry, and work together to ensure that our canopy continues to grow. Thank you very much.
Caller, caller number one, you can talk now if you want to, I can't identify you, but caller number one, do you have anything you would like to share? Okay. Caller number two, do you have anything you would like to share? Okay. Ashley Bowers, do you have anything you would like to share? Ms. K E R R, would you, do you have anything you would like to share with the committee?
Sure, hi, I'm Kate Kerr, here with the Nature Conservancies Maryland and DC Chapter. I'd just like to applaud the work that the groups in Baltimore have done on the ground to support the. on the ground to support this legislation and forest conservation in Baltimore and say that we also urge a favorable report on this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tyler? Chad? Mr. Williams, do you have anything you would like to share with the committee?
I have submitted written testimony, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. or Mr. Eliot? W E I D O W, do you have anything you would like to share with the committee? Ms. Eva Hammond? You have anything you would like to share with the committee? Hello? Mr. Donato? F A V I O L A, can't pronounce your first name. Do you have anything you would like to share with the committee? Hello? Jenny Gelder, do you have anything you would like to share with the committee? Ben Stoudamire? Do you have anything you would like to share with the committee? Okay. Good morning, do you have anything you would like to share with the committee? Vanna? J. Avanna? Okay, moving right along. Ms. Koontz? Jennifer Koontz, do you have anything you would like to share with the committee? Ms. Koontz?
Sure, this is Jennifer Koontz from Clean Water Action. We support this legislation and echo Blue Water Baltimore's comments. Nothing further to add.
Okay. Okay. John Mara, do you have anything you would like to share with the committee? Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Do you have anything you would like to share with the committee?
Yes, I do. My name is Mark Conway. I want to thank the committee for giving me the opportunity to testify today. I'm representing the Chesapeake Conservancy and I also happen to be the Democratic nominee for the 4th District on the City Council. So I'll be joining you guys soon. I want to urge you guys to support this bill for a number of reasons. Of course, the benefits have been laid out by a couple of the folks before me. Of course, it has an impact on carbon. Of course, it has an impact on stormwater and flooding, which we're going to deal with in a pretty big way today, as we all know. But it also has an impact on energy costs and the urban heat island effect, which we're going to be dealing with for the remainder of this summer. And as we talk about social distancing and the ability for people to get outside, our trees and our forests have a huge impact on making sure that going outside is actually hospitable and can be welcoming to folks. When we look at the tree canopy over time, of course, our goal as a city has been to achieve a 40% tree canopy. We have seen a 1% increase since 2007, as we know. And interestingly, we saw a 5% increase in part due to growth of trees over time and also a ton of the planting that our partners have been doing. But we've also seen a 4% decrease because we haven't properly protected our tree canopy. This bill really helps us to properly account for the importance of our trees and to make sure that we can actually achieve the goals that we set forth, you know, over a decade ago. So yeah, I urge you guys to support this. This is going to be really, really important. And yeah, appreciate you guys considering it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair? I'm sorry, I missed the name of that person that was, it's Mary Ann Clark. Who was that that just testified?
Mark Conway.
Thank you, oh, yeah.
Joining us in December.
Yes, yes, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Conway.
Matthew Baker, do you have anything you wish to say to the committee?
I'm here. I am in support of this bill, but I'm not a resident of Baltimore. I am here on behalf and in support of Baltimore Green Space. And I believe that Ms. Lauder is going to be testifying in support of this bill. And so I'm here to answer questions that anyone may have. I'm a faculty member at UMBC.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lauder, Catherine Lauder, I see you are panelists. Did you want to testify at this moment? Catherine Lauder?
Yes, I would love to testify.
Go ahead.
So my name is Catherine Lauder. I was born and raised in Baltimore. I'm the Executive Director of Baltimore Green Space, a member of the Baltimore City Forestry Board, and a proud Western dove. It is an honor to speak before you as this council has moved forward an impressive amount of innovative legislation. I come before you on behalf of the Forest Stewards. Under their charge, I ask for your support for this forest conservation bill. The requests of these neighbors, neighborhood leaders, for protection of community forests caused Baltimore Green Space to launch the Forest Patch Program in 2012. I believe you have in front of you the images of the impacts that resulted from the clearing of the Wilson Woods lots. That loss and neighborhood outcry prompted our analysis with Dr. Matthew Baker of UMBC and the Office of Sustainability to determine how many forest patches exist in Baltimore that are vulnerable to development loss, which might decrease the environmental health and physical health of communities. Loss of forest natural areas result not only in loss of wildlife, quality soil, native vegetation and trees, but also increased stormwater impacts such as flooding basements, increased temperatures for neighborhoods, exacerbating heat island effects, and decrease the air quality of neighborhoods. While we knew from our initial analysis of 2007, the 2007 data, that 20% of the urban forests are outside of parks, a city colleague asked just how many of these forested spaces are 5,000 square feet or greater. So again, our partner scientist from UMBC, Dr. Matthew Baker, completed an analysis of the more recent 2015, sorry, tree canopy data to get this answer. Of the nearly 220,000 parcels in the city database, 6,067, 6,060, I'm sorry, guys, 6,679 contain close to 4,000 acres of forest patch canopy. Once again, 6,679 contain close to 4,000 acres and over half, 54%, of which are owned by Baltimore City. Of those, 2,388 contain forest areas of 5,000 square feet or greater. These patches are not only located in wealthy neighborhoods, but more distributed than you might think. Each one of those patches cools their neighborhood, improves air quality, and provides a place where the community might access nature and have peaceful places to play. This bill will provide for greater protections of these essential spaces and we urge you to support this bill as by protecting forests, you protect community health and access to the relief that the patches provide. During this COVID-19 pandemic, neighborhoods need access to nature more than ever. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Marguerite, Marguerite, let's take a pause for a second. Can we do that?
Okay.
So I have the document you sent me and I've got five amendments for, and I'll make sure this is circulated to all the committee members. You just sent this to me. But I've got five amendments to Department of Planning, three amendments from Department of Law, which was sent to DLR, Victor, and two amendments from Office of Sustainability. So Stegman, who do you want me to send you? And I see you just sent this.
I just sent you something that has it all in one place, per your request. And just to sort of close the book on the question about amendments from law, what it looked like from the synopsis. There was the substantive amendment that Victor proposed in his bill report and then some accompanying technical amendments to change the purpose paragraph. But so there's one substantive amendment from law and then it looks like two other technical amendments that go with that, that clean it up.
Thanks.
Let me tell you, thank you, Matt. Thank you very much.
Yep.
So it looks like what? Marguerite sent five from planning, three from law, two from sustainability. So it looks like it's the same. Matt, what I'm going to do is forward you what Marguerite sent me. And if you can just confirm that that is in sync with what you just sent me, that would be greatly appreciated. I'll send that to you, Nina, Kaylin, and Dominic. So can you confirm that you can do that real quick?
Yeah, I'll take a look at it as soon as it hits my inbox.
All right, just a second. Marguerite, please proceed with public testimony. Marguerite?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was on, Ms. McKay Jenkins. Do you have anything you would like to present to the committee?
Yes, please. Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is McKay Jenkins. I've lived in Baltimore for 17 years. I've taught environmental studies at the University of Delaware for 25 years. And I currently serve on the board of the nonprofit group Interfaith Partners for the Chesapeake, a network of 75 congregations throughout the city and 300 congregations statewide that work to restore our communities. As you know, structural racist policies like redlining, practices in community zoning have meant that many of Baltimore's traditionally African-American neighborhoods have been denied the capacity to accumulate both personal and community wealth. This has led to a decline in community capacity to invest in shared spaces, including parks, street trees, community gardens, and other open spaces. The decline in tree cover has also contributed to a wide variety of public health and economic problems, including epidemic levels of asthma in our children caused by air pollution, significantly hotter streets because of a lack of shade, increased flooding, a decline in community mental health caused by increased levels of stress and a lack of peaceful places for rest and play, an ongoing decline in personal home values, and a reluctance for small businesses to invest in our communities. A recent study showed that poor and historically redlined neighborhoods in Baltimore are fully six degrees hotter than the city's average temperature. This represents the second greatest temperature difference in the United States. It's also important to understand Baltimore's place in that regional, national, and global collapse of ecosystems. For example, the United States has 40% fewer birds than it did just 40 years ago, largely due to the national decline in trees and native plants. Estimates are that we need to plant about 1.5 trillion more trees worldwide to effectively combat climate change. Both in my professional and volunteer capacities, I work on forest restoration projects all over the city, planting trees, removing invasive species, and restoring native plants in underserved communities. For example, this summer, I've spent hundreds of hours working with the U.S. Forest Service on a church-based forest restoration project in West Baltimore that this year alone will see the planting of some 3,000 trees, development of a permanent tree nursery to help reforest underserved neighborhoods, and the creation of jobs in a neighborhood that desperately needs them. There's an old expression that says the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago and the second best time is today. For many, many reasons, this is an excellent time for Baltimore to invest in its forests and its people because the two always go together. I know from deep personal experience that the city has tremendous strength and capacity to repair many decades of environmental and community neglect. This bill could be a big part of that and I urge you to pass it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Mia Blom, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Mia? Mia Blom, B-L-O-M. I'm going to move to the next person. Michael Karasil, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Michael?
How do I do that?
Just speak.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize I was on. Yes, thank you so much. I'm a Forest Stewart for Fairwood Forest, which is in sort of the Hamilton community and between White and Bel Air Road. And I submitted testimony. I've been living in the city for about 34 years. My wife, Helen Caligari, most of her life. And we celebrated about a year ago the culmination of more than seven years of community development fundraising to commemorate the community ownership of Fairwood Forest. The forest is Baltimore's first and Maryland's first community-owned and protected urban forest. A group of around 120 people, including neighbors, Senator McCray, Council President Scott, well, he was councilman at that point, various nature groups, and my fellow Forest Stewards attended the celebration. The forest trails and wildlife are enjoyed by our neighbors and visitors from all over the city. Last summer, children from a local camp were seen visiting the forest. This went before the lockdown, getting an urban experience of nature. Over the last 12 months, my fellow stewards and I have been removing invasive vines. The vines were harming the tree canopy. And this is really what's important about your legislation. We've cleared about 80% of the forest's canopy from these strangling vines. The trees, the undergrowth, and the bird population all appear to be much healthier, at least in my opinion. And so keeping the old growth is very important because it affects the whole stratosphere of the forest from top to bottom. About 20% of the forest's remaining parcels are not owned by Baltimore Green Space. These parcels are under 20,000 square feet. By reducing the canopy conservation trigger, that's the correct term, to, from 20,000 to 5,000, it would immediately solve our problem in creating a significant disincentive from the remaining owners cutting down these old-growth trees. Anyway, that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Miller, do you have anything you wish to say to the committee? Robert Miller or Miller Roberts? Okay. Mr. Emmott Paul?
Oh, good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I just wanted to comment. I put a little notice in the chat box for the committee members. I do encourage you to review this article from 2019 because it emphasizes the benefit of urban forestry and how it relates to temperature control in terms of Baltimore City. And it also emphasizes the environmental justice benefits in various neighborhoods of the city. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Rodette Jones? Ms. Jones, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee?
Yes, my name is Rodette Jones. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Rodette Jones. I'm a Baltimore City resident and community association leader. And I'm currently doing a tree project for Curtis Bay with Blue Water Baltimore and recently helped them with the tree planting in the Brooklyn area. Thank you again, Committee Chair, for hosting this hearing and taking this issue seriously. I currently run Filbert Street Garden and the green space called Garrett Park. I love the sea, green of Baltimore due to the amount of pollution, truck traffic we have that's in the south part of the city. I'd like to share a fact or two about this issue, which I find compelling. Say, a healthy city has a tree canopy of at least 40%. Baltimore City has a 28% tree canopy. In order to continue to grow our city's tree canopy, we must protect our existing trees. Trees clean out air and water, reduce flooding, lower temperatures and energy bills, improve public health and social cohesion, and beautify our communities. The current laws passed for the Forest Conservation Act is over 20 years old and should be updated to comply with state law. The current laws passed for the Forest Conservation Act is over twenty years old and should be updated to comply with state law, codify existing policies, policies, and coordinate with other city environmental regulations. These updates will help curb future tree canopy due to loss of development and build toward a healthier green of Baltimore. I'd like to thank you for, um, giving me the time to address these issues and urge you to support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Taylor Smith?
I don't have anything to add. I support the bill.
Okay, thank you. Tim Willer? Mr. Willer, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Okay. Mr. Chair, it's my understanding that there are several people that are serving as panelists that would like to testify.
How, how did folks who are testifying get elevated to panelists?
Um, some of them I elevated. Uh, for example, Amanda Cunningham, let's see. I elevated some of them. So, I would, is there anyone that's serving as a panelist have anything they would like to say to the committee?
Yes, this is, uh, Amanda Cunningham, and I did provide, uh, eight beautiful slides for the committee to, uh, look at while I give my presentation. Any way to, uh, affect that?
Uh, Ms. Cunningham, Cunningham, if I made you the presenter, would you be able to bring your slides up?
Hey, let's give it a shot.
Okay, let's see. Give me a second.
All right.
Please proceed. Can you bring it up? Okay.
I don't know. Are we able to do that? Let's see.
Can you go up to the view section, view, in the upper left-hand corner?
Let's see now. The view section of the upper left-hand corner.
You'll see some icons saying view. V-I-E.
Yeah, I see that. Yep.
Okay, click on that. Click on that.
Yep, got that.
Click on it?
Yep.
And then you bring up your, bring up your slides.
Show participant video. Okay. Okay, so that's not working. So let's just proceed, all right?
Okay.
All right, my name, my name is Amanda Cunningham. I was born and raised in Baltimore City and current city resident. I speak with you today as a member of the City Forestry Board, certified arborist, and I've been working on this tree ordinance committee with a great team of people for this legislation. And over the last twenty-some-odd years, I've planted hundreds of city trees with lots of volunteers. And I co-founded the Baltimore Tree Trust, where we doubled the tree canopy in the Kelbary Park and planted trees in Elwood and Madison East and Middle East and Broadway East. I've also, um, helped found the Treekeepers Program and the Flowering Tree Trails and currently on the Friends of Herring Run Parks Board. So while it's been rewarding, urban and community forestry is very difficult to do. It, uh, it feels like a luxury no one can afford, as if we're always climbing this sky-high ladder on a windy day. We greener seem to take one step upward only to find ourselves two rungs back down. And I submit that that's due to the lack of political will, the lack of innovation and forward vision in our city leadership and public agencies, and that holds us swaying on this ladder with little support. As Amy has outlined, this bill will inch us forward in creating a healthier city. Updating code to minimize the loss of trees represents a positive step in forest conservation and indirectly begins to assign a realistic dollar value to green infrastructure. Yes, trees aren't worth money. Unlike much of our city's gray infrastructure, trees increase in value over time. They produce more benefits as they grow. Trees impact economics. Real estate data shows that people prefer to buy homes and to shop longer in areas where trees are part of the neighborhood landscape. Explosion of park users during the last six months shows us that people value parks and green spaces to recharge emotional and physical health. So developers must equitably address the disparity across all the city neighborhoods in terms of green infrastructure. We continue losing trees, no one will, will be able to breathe. For trees impact human health regardless of age, income, education, or race. Everyone has the right to live near natural spaces and have a view of green. As has been pointed out, our tree canopy percentage was measured at twenty-seven percent back in twenty, two thousand and seven, when we set the forty percent goal. And currently, it's twenty-eight percent. So we've, we've actually gained one percent, which is equivalent to fifteen hundred acres of trees. But we lament the loss of thirteen hundred acres of trees during that same time. So we're going up and down the ladder. Yes, despite all the hard work of the Forestry Division, Tree Baltimore, Baltimore Greenspace, Blue Water, Flowering Tree Trails, Tree Trust, and the over three hundred volunteer Baltimore Treekeepers, we continue to lose high-functioning forested areas in the name of lucrative private development and gray infrastructure upgrades that do not take into account the value of mature forests. We can reach forty percent, and we can become known as a healthy, vibrant, green-friendly city. With the passage of this bill, we can feel good about the progress we are all making. So let's welcome innovation and vision. Let's create a better balance of green and gray for our city for the health of everyone. Thank you very much.
Any other panelists? Have anything they would like to say to the committee?
Hi, um, I'm Miriam Evans. I'm co-chair of the Sustainability Commission. It's great to be with you this morning. Um, I'm really very happy to testify in support of Bill twenty oh five four six regarding forest and tree conservation. You know, it's an update that conforms to changes in the state program and better account for the role of forested areas here in Baltimore, which are really unique. Um, this also really brings us toward fulfilling the Sustainability Plan, implementing it. In the Sustainability Plan chapter on trees, um, our strategy three, action two, calls for the city to adopt a tree ordinance to preserve trees and forests on public and private property. The legislation before you today is one of several bills that will accomplish this goal. In a city, landscapes are built on a smaller scale than in rural areas. And Baltimore's forested areas are truly meaningful. They're meaningful to people seeking recreation and respite to more than ninety species of birds and to at least twenty-three species of native trees. They absorb stormwater more effectively than other, any other land use, which is super important on a day like today. And they clean and cool the air, as you've heard. And because they're scattered around the city, they do this more effectively than a similar acreage of forested land in one place. This, um, bill is personally meaningful because I was the director of Baltimore Greenspace for a long time. And we, when we brought these patches to the attention of city government, we were looking at an asset that was overlooked. And yet, we saw neighbors who were getting out to work caring for forests in Wilson Park, Pennsyl City, Hamilton, along York Road, and elsewhere. And with this bill, you have the opportunity to simultaneously protect the environment that supports us all while providing recreational opportunities for many neighborhoods. And all of this while streamlining regulatory review. So thank you very much, and I hope that you will advance this one.
Mr. Chair, there's one caller who wants, I can't identify him, but let me try.
Go ahead. Remind. Thank you.
I'm trying to reach Bryant Smith. Bryant Smith? Bryant Smith? There's no other call in, so he must have left. Okay. So if there are no other panelists, Mr. Chair, that concludes the public testimony.
All right, let's get into the amendments. Our colleagues, you should have an email. Hang on one second, actually. Who's that?
But Matt, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Um, I'm technically sort of behind the times. I'm afraid if I leave this hearing to go on to my emails, I may not get back on this hearing.
You don't, you don't need to, you don't need to leave to.
Oh, are you gonna put them on the screen?
Uh, I can. Uh, Marguerite, can you make me a presenter?
I would, okay, will do.
Trying to reach. I'm trying to reach my office, but thank you.
Nope.
Thank you.
No problem. Uh, colleagues, uh, you can follow along and email that Matt Stegman, uh, sent to us at eleven nineteen A.M. Uh, Marguerite, am I good to go?
Yes, sir.
You all see that document? Colleagues, can you see that document?
I can see it, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
All right, and it's taken up your whole screen?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to check. Okay, uh, let's start with Law Department, Victor. Um, walk me, walk me through Amendment One here.
So Amendment One really is what I was.
That's what, what you described earlier, right?
Right, and a number, and Amendment Two is just the purpose paragraph and.
Victor, 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 slow down, slow down.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to be rude. Amendment One's what you described earlier. That's to remove, uh, the, the provisions of the bill that replicate existing state law, correct?
Right, that's correct.
Uh, Amy, uh, from Sustainability, uh, and Planning, as well as, uh, Matt Stegman, do you have any concerns with that amendment?
No, Victor spoke with me, um, before making that amendment, and I agreed.
Okay, uh, Stegman, the administration have any concerns with this amendment?
No, I mean, the, the requirements are still in place. They're still in state law.
Okay, Kalen, Council President's Office have any concerns? Kalen? Dominic?
Mr. Chair, I'll check with Kalen.
Okay, uh, we're, because we're gonna run through each of these. Uh, okay, Victor, let's go to Amendment Two.
Amendment Number Two is just the technical amendment that basically, uh, if you strike Number One, you have to modify the purpose paragraph to allow for Amendment Number One to go through. So it's, it is just a technical amendment.
Got it. Um, and Amendment Three?
Amendment Three does the same thing, just a technical correction if you allow for them.
Got it. Amy, I assume you have no concerns. Same for Stegman and Council President's Office.
No concerns.
Yeah, none.
Council President's Office?
I'm gonna assume. I spoke with Kalen. I believe he's having some, uh, technical difficulties because he, uh, basically said we're good with that as well.
We're good, okay. Excellent. Planning Department? Amendment Number One?
Sure, so.
From thirty to ninety days.
Yes, that was an amendment, um, offered by the Planning Commission at their July ninth meeting. Um, the thought behind this amendment was to give more time for anyone with, um, uh, with plans submitted to have their comments reviewed under the existing code rather than having the changes, um, take effect so quickly.
Okay, and Planning Staff is okay with this?
Yes.
Okay, uh, um, Mayor's Office and Council President's Office, any concerns? Okay, seeing that there are none, Amendment Two?
Amendment Two is just a technical correction, um, related to a reference.
Okay, I'll assume there's no, uh, concerns unless voiced. Amendment Three, clarification of scope?
Yes, um, Amendment Three, um, clarifies our existing policy for how it is determined, um, how the, the area subject to forest conservation calculations are determined. So this just spells out our existing policy into the code.
Mayor's Office and, and Council President's Office, any concerns? Hearing that there are none, Amendment Four?
Amendment Four was, um, is a, just a technical correction to place, um, the, sorry, I'm just catching up on what I'm looking at here. Placing, um, credits generated by a forest mitigation bank in the order for the options for mitigation, placing it third in that list.
Any objections or concerns? Hearing that there are none, Amendment Five?
Amendment Five, the, um, kind of the content of the amendment is where it says eleven renovation of an existing athletic field, athletic court, or playground that does not include the cutting or clearing of existing forest or specimen trees. This is an amendment that was requested by, um, Department of Recreation and Parks related to concerns of, um, capital projects related to, um, courts, athletic fields, and playgrounds. And this would apply both to city projects and to private property projects of this type.
So Amy, walk, walk me through what that means. I think. Same question.
Uh, we had someone testifying in opposition to Wreckin' Parks Plan, um, amendments, and I haven't had a chance to see them at all. And I'm concerned, and it's, I, I think Janet Morgan's on line for the agency. But I'm, I, I, I need to understand it because I don't want to vote for something that, it may be a controversial, or is it number five? Are we on, what are we on? Oh, no, I just lost the whole thing. Man.
Sorry, I, I pulled up my, there we go.
If it would be, I can provide a little bit more detailed background as far as what this would mean.
Yeah, yeah, do that, Amy, please.
Yeah, please.
So, um, again, the, the wording is that this would, um, make exempt three different types of projects. So athletic fields, athletic courts, or playgrounds. And they would only be exempt if they're not cutting or clearing, um, trees or forests. And so what that means is that, um, these projects not click, clearing forests or trees, they would not have to do the afforestation requirement that's in our existing code, which would require planting new trees, um, at a ratio of, um, fifteen trees per acre. And so, um, they just would not have that planting requirement. If they would be clearing trees, they would be then subject to the full requirements.
So walk, walk me through this, Amy. If, if I'm wrecking parks and I'm getting ready to, um, expand the, the facilities at an existing park, let's say I need to chop down some trees to, you know, expand an existing softball or baseball field, what does that, what does that mean for wrecking parks? With, with this amendment, if it's passed?
So this amendment wouldn't change any requirements for any project that would be clearing, um, existing trees or forests. It would be only, be only renovation of something that exists. Something that exists. That would then not be subject to the afforestation.
Okay, so, okay, so. Why are we echoing? Why are we echoing?
I'm sorry. Please pardon me. Amy?
Amy?
Can you, can you talk a little slower about what this is and does? I'm sorry, this is the one.
Can we address the echoing, or is that okay now?
I think it's okay.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I, that everybody can hear. So, um, as it stands now, under the current regulations. So, um, as it stands now, under the current regulations, if Wreckin' Parks would be taking an existing field and renovating it, there would be a planting requirement, um, of fifteen trees per acre for those projects. And so this would, um, then take those types of projects, either an athletic field, a hard surface court, or a playground, and make those types of projects not subject to that fifteen tree per acre afforestation requirement. Um, but if, if it would be a project that would clear trees, the clearing of trees would then be subject to the full requirements.
So Amy, I'm, I'm not following, and, and I, I, I'm not sure why I'm not following, but... So let's do, let's do a couple examples, right? So if, if we have a, a, a baseball field that we are going to expand, we're gonna move the fence in the outfield, we're gonna cut down some trees to do that. What happens under the current bill as drafted versus what happens under, um, the, the, this amendment? So let's say we've got a clear one acre worth of trees to expand the outfield for a baseball field. What happens under the, the bill as currently drafted?
So as the, so comparing without the bill to with the bill, um, without the bill, in area, I'm sorry, what? Under the, okay, so under the amendment, the existing portion of the field...
No, 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 go to, go to, explain to me what happens with the bill currently as drafted without this amendment first, and then explain to me what happens if the amendment is adopted.
Okay, um, with the bill currently as drafted, it would be, um, this project would basically be treated as it would be under current code. There's nothing in the bill that would change this. It would be handled as it currently would be, which is, um, for any portion of a project that would be clearing forests or trees, it would be subject to the mitigation calculations under the state code. And any portion that doesn't have trees that's regraded would be handled under the afforestation, which is the, kind of the requirement related to creating tree canopy. Um, and so that's current requirements that would apply in that case without this bill.
And excuse me if I can't...
Or Councilwoman, give me one second, so I can run through this, this logically here. So, okay, now Amy, tell me what happens if the amendment is adopted?
So if the amendment is adopted, the, the clearing would still be subject to existing requirements. The area that would be regraded without any impact to trees would no longer have the requirement for planting additional trees, um, for providing that fifteen percent tree canopy.
So, so essentially the amendment waives these requirements for Wreckin' Parks if they're expanding a, uh, some type of recreational facility that fits within the criteria laid out at the moment, correct?
This is Charlie from Wreckin' Parks, if, if I could chime in.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it's not about the notion of expanding current things. It's about the notion that Wreckin' Parks renovates ballfields and playgrounds and things at like, a, a rapid pace, and so it's alleviating them having to pay for the afforestation of trees when they are just renovating existing things, not the notion of expanding.
Mr. Chairman, and everybody, and Mr. Murphy, and Amy, um, there's a little history in my life with Wreckin' Parks opposing my small tree canopy, um, legislation to the point that even after I thought we had all agreed, they were opposing it quietly, and I just let it go. And, um, about pesticides as well, it's, it's just so difficult to get buy-in. Here is this, and I don't see why they shouldn't, practically speaking, are you saying that they would have to, it's because they would have to plant a tree on second base or something, or is it just they don't want to have the additional worry and cost?
Uh, so this is, this, yeah, this is Charlie. Um, so, again, I work in forestry and was not expecting to talk during this thing at all. So, um, I'm talking, I guess, holistically as the department right now, um, not as myself. From my understanding, Capitol's concern is the additional costs because they do so many renovations throughout the year, uh, that don't affect trees at all. It's literally just regrading a baseball diamond, um, or, or repaving something, et cetera, like, uh, well, uh, uh, like tennis courts or something like that, that they don't want, um, to have the additional cost. Because it's not just the cost of the trees to them, it's also finding locations and the maintenance and all that kind of stuff that comes with it. Um, but to my understanding, that's all it really is. It's the additional cost that, unfortunately, for, or Wreckin' Parks doesn't really have, um, to continually hinder the potential of, say, doing these renovations. So if they have to lessen the number of renovations tied to this, um, this new bill, they're just looking to have that be amended.
Let me just say, you know, uh, uh, let, let me just say that, thank you. Forestry, they're heroes as far as I'm concerned. They've always, forestry has always been supportive. I'm just gonna be voting against this amendment because, yeah, these things cost money. The people that have testified today say that. They're, this, this, what we need to do does not come without cost, but the, the, the value that comes from everyone participating, and all agencies participating, is beneficial, as we have heard, um, in terms of the value that is, that comes back to the environment and the city. So, I got it. It's about the money. It's, I understand we do not give enough money to Wreckin' Parks. We should give more, maybe we'll have more to do at, you know, to do so. But why should Wreckin' Parks of all places be, be exempted from this requirement? Yeah, it's a burden. But thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for letting me hear about what this is. I appreciate it, and Amy, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, may, may I ask a question, or I'm trying to, I don't think, I don't think it's a statement, but I'm just trying to understand why the repaving of a basketball or a tennis court would trigger, um, would even be considered to trigger, you know, the, the, um, the, um, the, what this bill is all about. I mean, as far as, you know, the reforestation or the assessment. It seems kind of strange that a repaving of a basketball court or tennis court would even be considered in this.
That, this is Charlie from Wreckin' Parks. I may have spoken out of turn on exactly what kicks it. I know that the, uh, football fields, baseball fields, um, playgrounds, if we're going to be renovating those, I may have spoken out of, or spoken out of turn as, in terms of tennis and basketball courts, my apologies.
No, it says, it says athletic court.
It may. I, that would be something Amy potentially could answer.
It also says...
Um, it basically is based on what's considered disturbance of the ground. So if it's just resurfacing, it wouldn't trigger because it wouldn't be disturbing the ground. But if it's completely digging it up, under the definition of disturbance, that would potentially trigger, depending on how much work was involved.
But this is already, this is an existing athletic court, whether it be tennis or basketball, right? It's not something new.
Vote for the amendment.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't understand, just to piggyback off Councilman Pinkett's question here, again, why would it matter if disturbed, why would disturbing ground matter if we're not cutting down trees?
It's, it's tied to erosion and actual effects to the ground that causes issues that, I mean, if you disturb soil or, or ground close to forested areas are causing issues, um, it's, it's just the way that was designed at state level.
Yeah, but like, how, how close to a tree does it, does this trigger?
It's not about how close it is to a tree, it's just about disturbing the soil, um, at any level. At a certain, this would be taking it to five thousand square feet versus twenty thousand.
Yeah, but, I, I don't mean to be argumentative here, and, and I'm personally out of the house of expertise here, but, but like, how, how close does the closest tree have to be in order to be impacted? I don't mean to open up Pandora's Box here, but I'm just, I, I, I don't understand. When you say, Charlie, appreciate all the great work you, you do at Forestry, um, you and Eric, Eric's team, and Jamila, et cetera, but I, I just don't understand how that impacts, like, if it, you're telling me if a tree is a mile away, that's a problem? Versus fifty feet away, I, I guess is what I'm trying to...
So, uh, so this, this is a state law that was designed, one, around protecting existing canopy, and two, adding to the canopy. So the actual disturbance to soil in this greater than, hopefully, five thousand square feet, but at the state level, it's twenty thousand square feet. That isn't tied to specifically damage that's being done to trees or the canopy, but it's a earmark for the state to hold people responsible to help increase the tree canopy, um, even if canopy may not be coming down for their specific projects. So it's not about how close it is to a tree, it's just the goal of the afforestation part of the bill, uh, at the state level.
Yeah, I add that there are all kinds of provisions for finding, um, off-site, um, replacement, uh, locations, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, everybody gotta pitch in, and the other agencies, as usual, have, whether it's about, whether it's about pesticides, or whether it's about smaller tree canopies or whatever, Wreckin' Parks needs to be part of the effort. And not always seek to get out of it in one way or another. This is like Mother Earth time.
Mr. Chair, may I...
I'm not gonna argue, I, I just want to make that point. I'm gonna vote against this amendment. Other people will probably vote for it. Too bad, but it's time for Wreckin' Parks to join the Mother Earth Brigade. Thank you.
Yep, uh, I'm just gonna, move to Councilman Pinkett.
I just wanted to ask Charlie one other question because, because I might be confused. Does, does Wreckin' Parks or Forestry, do, do you plant trees during any, or support tree planting during any other time or any other activities?
Yeah, so forestry, um...
And, and, and I just, before you give your, because, because I'm, I'm hearing this, for, Wreckin' Parks needs to contribute or be a part of, and I'm just like, I thought you were the leading effort in the city.
Yeah, so, so there's two ways of looking about, looking at tree planting. Um, one, it was what is called afforestation, which is adding new canopy. Um, and that's just adding to our canopy, which is extremely important because we do need to be increasing our tree canopy. And the other is essentially called reforestation. Um, also, the term mitigation gets thrown around. And that's basically replacing trees that are coming down, um, a, a, and trying to recapture the canopy that we've lost. Forestry within Wreckin' Parks plants both. So when DPW has a project that removes hundreds of inches of trees, they pay forestry a fee in lieu, um, which is mitigation funds. And so forestry orchestrates planting those trees throughout the city. But that is simply reforestation. That is capturing or recapturing the canopy that was lost due to projects. Afforestation is something that we are constantly looking for funding for, whether it's through grants, um, or, or CIP funds, to add to the canopy. When, and so this, this part of the bill that we're talking about right now with this amendment is alleviating Wreckin' Parks from having to do some afforestation essentially tied to this, um, state regulation. But forestry is doing afforestation planting. I'll, I'll be a, a bit less than we normally are because we have so many mitigation funds happening, uh, or, or coming in because of all these projects. But yes, we are, we are doing quite a bit of planting.
Thank you, that, that's what I wanted to hear, and, and, and quite possibly if this amendment went through, I mean, if, if the amendment didn't go through, the, your afforestation efforts would be just transferred to anything tied to, to this, um, to this bill. Like, any activities that you would be associated with this, you would just replace it with, because...
Right, so internal talks essentially have, uh, have, uh, dwindled down to the notion that if this amendment is not, um, passed, essentially, any afforestation planting that Wreckin' Parks is doing through forestry would essentially be put into a bank to help cover, um, this part of, of Capitol's projects. Um, that being said, as I said, we, we have a lot of mitigation funds. We do not get a lot of afforestation funds. So it'd be us fighting or arguing for getting more of those so that we can have a bank that would appropriately cover, um, any of these things that Capitol would help.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, get back to amendments here. Okay, let's run through Sustainability Amendments One and Two.
Sure, these are both, um, clarifications of intent. One is just, um, a rewording to make it clear, um, which types of, of permits and projects are subject to the requirements. Um, lost the screen, okay, there. And then the second one is a clarification related to the, um, the policy for amending a forest conservation easement and what the standards are that would have to be shown in order to have that considered.
Mayor's Office, President's Office, any concerns? Hearing none, let's move to Amendment Two. Amy?
Oh, I'm sorry, I quickly spoke to Amendment One and Amendment Two without giving you a break, sorry.
Nope, that's all right, I missed that. Uh, Mayor's Office, President's Office, any concerns with Amendments One or Two? Okay, uh, Victor, Law Department, any concerns with any of these amendments?
We've reviewed them all, the Law Department has no problem.
Okay, uh, Marguerite, what we're gonna do is we're gonna move all the amendments as one package with the exception of, uh, Planning Department Amendment Number Five. Marguerite?
Can you hear me? Yes, I'm here. You said it. I'm here, Mr. Chair.
Yep, hang on one second, I wanna stop sharing here. All right, so colleagues, is there a motion to move all of the amendments as one package with the exception of Planning Department Amendment Number Five?
Move, rising of moves.
All right, Pinkett, okay. Motion by Risinger, uh, second by Pinkett. We're gonna do roll call on this one. Costello's a yes, Clark?
Yes.
Yes, Block?
Yes.
Uh, Pinkett?
Yes.
Risinger?
Yes.
Sneed?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the package of amendments passes. Uh, we are going to now entertain a motion for Planning Department Amendment Number Five. Is there a motion?
To move, Pinkett.
Motion by Pinkett, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second by Sneed.
Second by Sneed. Okay, we'll do roll call. Uh, Costello's a yes, Clark?
I'd like to explain my no vote.
Yes, ma'am.
This is not about forestry. Forestry does a, yeah, a wonderful job, works with the environmentalists, totally essential, but has no administrative power around legislation such as this. It is, that is the job of the top administration, not of the division. And this is just one more. Know that Wreckin' Parks is underfunded. I wish they had more. I know they will get more in the future. But stop ducking out. I vote no.
Thank you, Block?
Yes.
Pinkett?
I'm gonna explain my, my yes vote. Putting an unnecessary burden on the agency that's already tasked with, um, uh, leading the reforestation, afforestation efforts of the city.
leading the reforestation, afforestation efforts of the city will ultimately hinder the other efforts of that agency, so.
Thank you, Councilman, and as usual.
I'm sorry, who are you trying to reach?
Councilman, okay, Councilman Pinkett, thank you for justifying your vote. As usual, I do not need to justify my vote because you, I can count on more articulately explaining why you're a yes vote. So thank you, Councilman. Councilman Rysinger?
Yes.
Sneed, Councilwoman Sneed? Councilwoman Sneed? I think she's on the other line. Give me one second here, I'm going to call her. Councilwoman Sneed?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Stokes?
Yes.
Okay, this amendment passes six to one. Is there a motion to move the bill favorably as amended?
Second Pinkett.
Motion by Bullock, second by Pinkett, Costello's, yes? Clark?
Yes.
Bullock? Pinkett?
Yes.
Rysinger?
Yes.
Sneed? Stokes? Stokes?
Yes.
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 Marguerite, this bill passes seven to zero, favorably as amended, and moves to second reader at the next meeting of the City Council. Thank you all for everyone.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, for clarification?
Yep.
All amendments passed?
Yes, all amendments passed.
Thank you.
This bill moves to second reader at the next meeting of the City Council. I want to thank everyone who provided written testimony and hung in here with us for an hour and forty-five minute hearing, along with the technical difficulties for this very important issue. Want to thank everyone who also testified, and want to thank the Forestry Division within Wreckin' Parks. You all do incredible work. You are grossly overfunded. Unfortunately, you have not appropriated the necessary funds to the Forestry Division. This is a battle that we go through every single year with the administration, and it's not just this administration, it's every administration. So this is no fault to Mayor Young or his administration. I want to be clear on that. But you all need to get more money. Hard stop, there's no other way to put it. We on the City Council need to be focused on that and understand public health benefits across the board in virtually every indicate, key indicator in our city to having a Forestry Division appropriately funded to do the great work that you all do. And I don't see any of my colleagues disagreeing with that. So on that note, we are in recess. Thank you all.